Well, but if it's, yeah. Yeah. I got six. I mean, I haven't looked at it, but I'm sure it is.
Just a rookie.
Yeah. All right.
All right. Good evening. Call to order the October 10th Hot Springs Planning Commission meeting. We will start with invocation and pledge of allegiance. Could I please ask Commissioner Walker to lead us in an invocation?
Heavenly Father, fill us with your grace and continue to remind us that all we do here today is for the glory of you and the service of our community. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please stand and follow me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you. I'm just gonna, I don't think we have anyone signed up to speak other than the people representing items on the consent agenda, right? Okay. Well, in that case, I'm gonna forego the reading of the meeting procedures and get to the roll call. Mr. Stotter, would you please call the roll?
Raymick?
Yeah.
Campbell?
Here.
Sharma?
Present.
Yates? Scott?
Present.
Gurke?
Present.
Collier?
Here.
Lamond?
Here.
Davis? Walker?
Here.
Val?
Here.
Stafford?
Here.
Okay. So now we need to approve the minutes from the last meeting. May I have a motion and a second for the approval of last month's meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So now we're gonna move to the approval of the agenda. May I have a motion and a second for approval of tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. We just, at this point, we'll just move straight into the consent agenda. First item for us to consider. So may I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Very good. Director Selman, can you please present the consent agenda?
Thank you. Item number one, FS 24148, 251 Thornton Ferry Road, a final subdivision plat request for Urban Edge Estates HPR. The recommendation is for approval with conditions, which I know are in here. Okay. The conditions are, and there are two, approve the after the fact side yard building setback variance request to approximately nine feet for unit A1 in Building A as illustrated on the Urban Edge Estates Horizontal Property Regime Final Plat. And number two, the plat must be filed with Garland County Circuit Clerk's Office and a recorded copy shall be returned to the Planning Department within 30 days of Planning Director's execution thereof, or this approval will become null and void. Item number two is a conditional use application, CU 24151 at 510 Albert Pike Road. This is a conditional use application to operate a vehicle sales business from C2 General Business District Zone Property. The recommendation on this is for approval with conditions. There are four conditions. They are, number one, required Americans with Disabilities Act pavement markings and Americans with Disabilities Act man accessible sign shall be installed prior to opening for business. Number two, this use activity shall not impose undue hardship nor nuisance upon the neighboring properties. Number three, the applicant has an affirmative responsibility to demonstrate ongoing compliance with the conditions of this approval. The violation of any of these conditions so imposed shall constitute grounds for revocation or modification of this conditional use permit by Planning Commission per Hot Springs Code Section 16279. And number four, days and hours of operation shall be Monday through Friday from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. as proposed by the application. Item number three is a lot split, 24154 at 1670 Shady Grove Road. This is a lot split application request to divide lot number two of the Lewis Lot Split Subdivision into two separate lots. Recommendation is for approval with conditions. Those conditions are, number one, this land division will need to be identified by a new subdivision name with the words "being a replat of Lot Two of the Lewis Lot Split Subdivision" being incorporated into the new plat's title. And number three, the plat must, and two, the plat must be filed with the Garland County Circuit Clerk's Office and a recorded copy shall be returned to the Planning Department within 30 days of the Planning Director's execution thereof, or this approval will become null and void. And that completes the items on the consent agenda.
All right. Thank you, Director Selman. Mr. Stotter, would you please take roll on the motion to approve the consent agenda?
Campbell?
Approve.
Sharma?
Approve.
Gurke?
Approve.
Collier?
Approve.
Lamond?
Approve.
Walker?
Approve.
Val?
Approve.
Raymick?
Approve.
Stafford?
Approve. Okay. Next on the agenda is new business. And, you know, for those that were representing items on the consent agenda, if you'd like to stay, you're welcome, but otherwise don't need to. So the next matter on the agenda is new business. Director Selman, this is one that you would be very happy to introduce, I'm sure.
Very much so. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number four, OA 24146, an ordinance amendment to change the City of Hot Springs zoning code, Code Forward, and we are looking at version 2.5.
So a motion to approve this item merely gets it on the floor for discussion. A motion and a second do not mean that you are necessarily in favor of an application. May I have a motion and a second to approve the item?
So moved. Second.
All right. Director Selman, please present the staff report on the item.
Thank you. Forward Hot Springs is the city's plan for prosperous lives in good neighborhoods in a great city. Many of you were in Hot Springs in 2022, and you may recall a staff report that started off this way. Initial participants in a click poll survey immediately told us flat out that Hot Springs spends a lot of time looking back instead of ahead. We knew then that the plan, known as Forward Hot Springs, actually needed to take us forward. Hot Springs Board of Directors adopted the new comprehensive plan on October 6, 2020. While the plan sets certain goals and activities, the document does not bind the current or any future Board of Directors. Implementing planned goals requires separate budget, policy, and ordinance decisions that are to be made following approval of that plan. The Board of Directors identified formulating a new zoning code in their annual priorities in years '22, '23, and '24. And tonight, we have Code Forward. That is the new zoning code, and it represents hundreds of hours of public and private participants who generously shared their perceptions and ideas about how we best can move toward Forward Hot Springs' vision and objectives. Hot Springs Planning Commissioners are to be specially recognized for their commitment to assessing the pros and cons of various potential methods for achieving the plan's goals. Their discussions were informed, thorough, and illustrated the many various perspectives of our communities. Their decisions were complicated and difficult. Code Forward applies to development initiated after the effective date of the ordinance, and it replaces current zoning regulations and the current zoning map. So that means that developments that exist now were subject to the requirements of the zoning that was in place when they were developed. New development will follow the new zoning regulations. Zoning delineates areas within which uniform regulations govern use, placement, spacing, and size of land and buildings. Each zone has a name and regulations specific to itself, and these zones are mapped on the official zoning map. Planning Commission delved deeply into the topics of housing, future land uses, signs, and landscaping, to mention only a few, and for those determining the need for more comprehensive study before recommending new approaches. Commission's study of alternative housing options, including manufactured homes, resulted in retaining the current code's manufactured home overlay method of identifying such home sites. Some changes in Code Forward 2.5 include new zone district names for all zones except CTR, Commercial Transitional. New residential districts are proposed. RN3 is a residential zone with very small lots at 3,000 square feet, and it's intended to encourage small lot, single-family home development. RN4, transitions from purely single-family to other missing middle options. RN6 specifically enables townhouse and multifamily development. RS, suburban residential with a 20,000-square-foot minimum lot size, fills the lot size gap between RR with a one-acre minimum and RN1 at 10,000 square feet. New residential zones are CMU, Commercial Mixed Use, IMU, Industrial Mixed Use, and Institutional, INST, for campus-type developments such as educational and medical complexes. PD, Plan Development Zones, are renamed while keeping a map indicator of their planned development options. Polka dots, also PD, will overlay their new underlying zone name meant to more clearly describe their residential, non-residential, or mixed-use nature. General development standards are gathered together in one chapter for ease of reference. A few new standards emerged, again directly related to Forward Hot Springs, including exterior lighting, which formerly was regulated through conditional use standards. These standards now generally will be applicable to development across the board. Steep slope development site disturbance will be limited to 18%, and establishing Lake Hamilton 20-foot shoreline setbacks. While residential development parking standards are unchanged, Code Forward 2.5 recommends allowing non-residential developments to establish their own parking minimums based upon the needs of their specific business models. Businesses, especially franchises or national brands, may have specific parking requirements of their own, and we have learned that financial institutions may impose minimums to their clients as well. Non-residential design standards for new development essentially take the Malvern Avenue overlay practices under the current code and bring them citywide, consistent with Forward Hot Springs. Planning Commissioners spent many hours over and above their usual monthly responsibilities reviewing the many draft versions of the proposed code. During the course of their review and of preparing for tonight's meeting, a few details remain to be addressed. Some are simple text errors. Some parcels on the map need to be fixed, primarily to reflect board-approved ordinances amending the zoning map in 2023 and 2024. Those changes will be addressed by means of individual amendments upon which Planning Commission will vote before they consider the zoning code version 2.5 and the zoning map in their entirety. The Code Forward effort aims to minimize nonconformity. Special care is taken to align new zone districts with existing onsite uses, if any. For example, if a permitted use existing at the time of ordinance approval should become conditional under the new code, that use is deemed approved rather than nonconforming. Recommendation is that Planning Commission recommend that the Board of Directors adopt an ordinance deleting Hot Springs Code Title 16, Chapter 2 zoning, and adopting a new Title 16, Chapter 2 zoning, known as Code Forward version 2.5 as amended, and adopting a new zoning map as amended. Secondly, recommendation, which came from Planning Commission in their many workshops, was a formal recommendation for a Planning Commission 2025 Plan of Work for which the Board of Directors funds continued implementation of Forward Hot Springs in the 2025 budget. That Planning Commission will focus on implementing Hot Springs Housing Strategy Goals in 2025. That Planning Commission commits to a joint effort with Urban Forestry Advisory Committee to update landscape standards. That Planning Commission reviews and updates design standards for signs. And finally, that Planning Commission revises the future land use plan map during 2025. And that completes the staff report.
Well, that's a lot, and thank you, Director Selman. We've got the amendments that we need to take a vote on that would amend the current version 2.5 to correct some items that may have come up since we discussed this last. So, given that there are a number of amendments, and we probably need to move those into consideration from a member of the commission, would you like to read, like, for example, the parcels, and then we can ask for an amendment to?
Sure.
To correct those?
Yes. The zoning map does need correction for approximately 13 parcels. They are parcel 54605 at 220 Gulfa Street. Proposed zoning of CTR should be on the map. This was rezoned to CTR in 2024 by Ordinance 6505. Parcel 54605 is shown on the map as RN2, which is the prior zoning that it had. Parcel 50665 at 1355 7th Street, the proposed zoning is RN5 to replace what is shown on the draft map. It was rezoned to R4 in 2024 by Ordinance 6504. Parcels 87038, 52249, and 52250 at 934 and 936 Golf Links Road and 138 Fontana Road, proposed zoning of I1, reflecting Ordinance 6501, which rezoned this land to industrial in 2024. Parcel number 38343 Cypress and Butterfield Streets, the proposed zoning on the map should be changed to CTR. This was rezoned by Ordinance 6496 this year to CTR. Parcel 52029 for 209 Carpenter Dam Road, proposed zoning should be CNC, that's commercial neighborhood. It was rezoned to C3 in 2024 by Ordinance 6497. Parcel 52625 at Abbott Place, this was a proposed zone that needs to show on the map as CTR, as it was rezoned to CTR this year by Ordinance 6493. Parcel number 81422, the 1100 block of Carpenter Dam Road, the new map needs to represent this as I1. It was rezoned to M1 in 2024 by Ordinance 6491. Parcel 39561 at 117 Alpine Street, the proposed map should show it as CTR. It was rezoned to CTR in 2023 by Ordinance 6481. Parcel number 52396 at 1103 Hickton Ferry Road, the map should indicate its zoning as CNC, that's commercial neighborhood. It was rezoned to C3 in 2023 by Ordinance 6483. Parcels 116329 for 136 and 140 Wayne Place, the proposed zoning map should indicate zoning of RN1, it's Residential Neighborhood 1, to reflect the fact that it was zoned to R2 in 2023 by Ordinance 6474. Parcels 45216, 45215, and 45214 at 115 Wind Street should show on the map as CTR because it was rezoned to CTR in 2023 by Ordinance 6475. Parcel 4416 at 222 Davidson Drive, the map should show it as zoned I1. It was rezoned to M1 in 2023 by Ordinance 6472. And 107039, that's a parcel number, in its entirety should be shown on the map as INST, Institutional. The current zone is a split zone, C3, R4 split, and it is a campus setting for assisted living and other housing. And that concludes the list.
Okay. Now I'd like to move that we amend the proposed zoning map to include the corrections that were just read by Director Selman, and in addition to correct RPID 52396 to CN, Neighborhood Commercial, to reflect the rezon approved earlier this year. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay.
Discussion?
Yeah, we can take discussion on these as we go. There are several.
Well, maybe I missed something in here. The, some of the nomenclature, it looks like the proposed zoning consistently follows the new zone designations we have. Just a typo, if you go down 52029, it says proposed C-C-N-C. We dropped the C on that?
We did.
And then two more down, 81422, proposed zoning I1. And I don't have 2.5 up, but I do have the use table, and it continues to refer to IL and IH rather than I1 and I2. So I'm not sure which was the final version of that, but I'll trust the staff to-
That's an L. Thank you for finding that.
Okay. And it's on here, and it's in there a couple of other times, I believe. Next to the last one is an I1.
Okay, so you would amend the motion to make those changes?
I propose that amendment if it's okay with the chairman.
Absolutely. Thanks for being an eagle eye and catching those.
And I guess part of that amendment includes if there were other similar type poses, the staff will correct those.
Yes.
All right, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Perfect. So we've got the motion on the floor. Do we need to vote on that one individually and then each one subsequently? Or can we do these all together?
I think you should do them individually, yes.
Okay, very good. So we have a motion on the floor, and it has been amended and seconded. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Very good. So we'll move to the next one. And I'm just gonna make a motion and ask for a second on these subsequent ones. So I move that we amend the Code Forward 2.5 text as necessary to reinstate manufactured home overlay language, including definitions, as it currently reads in the zoning code into Code Forward, and also to amend the zoning map to carry forward existing manufactured home overlay boundaries onto the proposed zoning map.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
I move we amend the Code Forward 2.5 text to insert Lake Hamilton before the word waterfront throughout the text, including definitions.
Second.
All right, all in favor? I move we amend Code Forward 2.5, Article 4, Table 4-1, to amend rear setback for RS to 30 feet and for RN1 to be 20 feet. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I move we amend Code Forward 2.5, Article 4, oh, I think I just, no, okay. Article 2.5, Article 4, Table 4.1, Article 5, Table 5.1, and Article 7.1.C.1, Table 7-1. Footnote number one to read, the minimum rear setback along any Lake Hamilton waterfront lot line is 20 feet.
Second.
All right, everybody in favor?
Aye.
I move we amend Code Forward 2.5, Article 5.4, C1, Page 5-5, and the word facade to read, item 1, a building facade facing a street must.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
I move we amend Code Forward 2.5, Article 6.4A, Table 6-2 as follows. Add to residential structures three or more units.
Second.
All in favor? I move we amend Table 4.1 and, or 4-1 and 5-1 dimensional standards to change SF to SF-D indicating single-family detached.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That represents a great deal of work right there. So I think you have all the amendments to get it up to where it should be to recommend this to the board now, is that correct?
I think so. Do we have anyone present to speak on the item?
Is there anyone signed up to speak, Rob? No? Okay. Well, the public discussion is now closed. And commissioners, do you have any questions following the process that we just went through?
Just a procedural question now. Do we still have on the table a separate motion to approve 6.5 separately from these? Or do we need that?
Six point-
I mean, 2.5. In other words-
Yes, you have a motion-
Yes, that is-
That, yes, as amended. You will need to, if that's not already in there, then-
Well, we've gotten the motion to consider the item. So I guess we just need now to make sure that we represent that as amended by all of our motions. Is there anything specifically we need to do to ensure that that is occurring? Or will that just naturally be?
Well, when you call for the vote, the vote, the boat, the motion becomes as amended and the map as amended. And I believe that's how you read it. But you may want to add, for the purpose of anyone in the future who may be listening to the minutes, that you are incorporating the amendments that were done here tonight. And also that you are recommending the 2025 Plan of Work to the Board of Directors.
Yes, okay. Lots of stuff in there. So, as a separate motion to include all of what we've just discussed, I move that we approve Code Forward 2.5 with the modifications that were just discussed and all the motions that went with that. And that would be the final document to be presented to the Board of Directors at their meeting for approval.
Yes.
Second.
I think we have a second, and even a second second.
You had me for a second there.
Had me at the first second, okay. Mr. Stotter, would you please call roll on the motion to approve?
Yes, sir.
Oh, sorry.
Ashley Campbell?
Approve.
Puniza Sharma?
Approve.
Cory, I'm sorry, Cory Scott. Brian Gerke?
Approve.
Derek Collier?
Approve.
Bill Lamond?
Approve.
Ladonte Walker?
Approve.
Bill Vowell?
Approve.
Rick Ramick?
Approve.
And Bart Stafford?
Thank you.
A huge sigh of relief. We can now move to the next-
Director's report?
Next item on the agenda, the director's report.
I know this won't be a letdown. Robin's code enforcement report that you asked about at a previous meeting.
Yes.
I think Robin has that to distribute to you. And this is strictly her zoning enforcement efforts. Robin does a ton of other things, but this report focuses strictly on zoning enforcement. So you'll see by topic the types of things that she's, oh, thank you, been involved in during the last month. And she is also one of our key customer service people and spends at least half of her time dealing with people who have questions about land use and zoning and so forth. And I think represents you very, very well. So just a little peek at what it is that she does. And if you ever have questions about what she's doing, she has documentation like you would not believe and is the only person I know who has read all of the planning commission minutes over the last, what, 20 years? And remembers all of it. So she is just an incredible resource for us. And I want to personally thank you, Robin, for everything you do to support us. And I don't even know where to begin to thank all of you for what you have done with Code Forward. At no point did I ever think it would end, and it's still not over. But you've done just a masterful job of pulling together new ideas with Hot Springs tradition, and that is an incredible balancing act. Thank you so much for the hours and hours that you put into this. And I could not be prouder to work for you. Thank you so, so much.
Thank you. Yeah.
Thanks, Kevin. That's kind words.
Fantastic department, and I know that the help from Camaro's was also very critical in the process. So- Actually, I wanted to thank Robin especially for putting this together. I know that's a new thing. I appreciate seeing this. And maybe when we look at these, if there are items that seem like they are habitual problems, we can at least understand that and know if there's something that we can address or not.
Yep.
One more thing before item 8 adjournment, which I know we're all hoping to get to. The status of the manufactured home standards.
Yes.
Can you please let us know what's going on with that?
Yes. At your meeting last month, you continued that item to your November meeting. And I wanted to, I'm so glad you brought that up. I wanted to ask you, given your commitment to looking at housing options overall, if you would like to let that go from consideration in November. It will be on the agenda because you continued it there. But if you want to just say, we're not ready to do this. We want to look at what the other options are with regard to the city's housing strategy. I think from your discussion during our Code Forward work sessions that you have a lot of other ideas in mind. And it might be premature to look at the manufactured housing date thing in November. So that was something I wanted to kind of get a feel from all of you, where you think we need to be with it.
I don't know. I kind of have mixed feelings about that, to be honest. I understand where you're going with that. It's something that I think we should perhaps deal with separately from the full housing strategy, just because whatever we decide on the manufactured home standards will be a part of that discussion anyway. And so it seems like, and I could be wrong, please give me your opinions, that that's something that we could decide prior to an overall discussion about the Hot Springs housing strategy, the grant that we got, you know, the need to look at what's in, you know, the strategic plan for the city to create another, perhaps, recommendation from the commission. So I don't know. What do y'all think? Is that something that we could consider separately? Or-
I agree with you.
I guess the only other consideration is that we would expect to get a proposal from this gentleman with the association on some alternate things to vote in with that, which may, we can certainly hear those. But I think he's definitely gonna make some proposals about what has been done in some other cities. And I don't really know how that would affect my vote, to tell you the truth, so.
Yeah. Well, but is he gonna be here?
Oh, he has submitted-
I figured he'd probably-
He submitted a letter from somebody in Kentucky who apparently represents manufactured home manufacturers. That sounded redundant. I guess it isn't. And he is demanding a fair housing study be done prior to any consideration of the item.
Pardon me, but who is he?
He is an attorney. He is, I would describe him as a lobbyist. And our city attorney is out of town for probably the next five days. So I have not had an opportunity to consult him about what he thinks the impact of that request or demand is.
What's his objection?
I would-
Several.
I'm unable to paraphrase his position because it is somewhat alien to mine.
It sounds like then there's enough ambiguity that perhaps we should take it off.
Maybe so.
Yeah.
But as I said, it will appear on your agenda, but you will have the-
Shut the table.
Well, you might want to just stick a knife in it for the time being and come back with a complete recommendation with regard to housing options and how you want to move on those.
Well, that certainly could, as you pointed out, be included as a part of the overall discussion.
Right.
I didn't mean to be in too much of a hurry saying they could be separated. It's just that I'd like to see us have, you know, solid standards for the safety of structures-
For sure.
-in the city whenever we can, you know, as soon as we can.
I may be way off base, but there's usually a direct correlation between affordable housing and cost of land. And it seems to me that one consideration should be, and I know everybody has their little bailiwick, but to me, this might be an instance, and I don't know if it's ever been done, where we work in association with the county because land is going to be cheaper in the county. And in many cases, the county can be from here to that wall. And in many places around the country, counties and cities are consolidated. There's one form of government and I guess all ancillary services. But this seems to be an instance where I think there might be some validity and given some thought to at least interacting with the county to see what their thoughts are. And we may end up with a more feasible and workable solution to this issue.
I have to say, Commissioner Vowell, I could not agree with you more. And I have been trying to figure out which handle to grab in county government to be able to have that conversation. Said handle does not appear to exist. So I mean, I've been kind of poking around to figure out how we can include the county in these kinds of discussions. I've had the opportunity to talk to a lot of folks in the county, and I know that they love their property rights. But there's a lot of development going on in places now where they're starting to say, hey, we need some, we need some rules here. And I think that's relevant to the whole housing strategy as well. So I agree with you. I'm just kind of- I'm just kind of struggling personally to know how to get the right person's attention. I will talk to Judge Mahoney about it, but there is no corresponding body to our zoning commission there. Is that accurate, Director Selman?
Yeah, I think it is. I think it is.
Okay. Gosh, I guess we're ready for adjournment then, huh?
Item number eight.
Item number eight. Can we get a motion and a second to adjourn?